All right ladies and gentlemen, I have seven P M. We're kind of a little disheveled, we just came out of a work session. So normally we would be a little more organized, but we wanted to say thank you so much for coming to this December meeting of the Board, Mayor, and Alderman. I know especially this time of year, December can be a little crazy as far as your schedules, and I think it says a lot for you to take time out. Thank you so much, Mr. Alderman, thank you Kirk. That you're taking time out of your holidays festivities and everything to come and see how your town operates. When you came into the room tonight, there are two sign up sheets. One of them is strictly, I call it an attendance sheet, hold on Mr. Mark, there might be some people that don't know what they should have been signing up for. There's two sheets, one's an attendance of you tonight, if we need to get back to you for any reason, that gives us a way to hit your address, your name. The other one, if you have something tonight you wish to address with the board, then there is a public comment sheet, and you need to be sure that your name is on the public comment. When we get started, they'll bring me that. I'll call your name, ask you to come up to the podium, just tell us again where your name, where you live, your address, and then we'll give you two minutes to address the board with any comments, concerns that you do have. Of course, it goes without saying, we expect disrespect will not be tolerated, we're all adults, we're all grown human beings here. We do try to limit you to two minutes, just to keep, give everybody a chance to talk and to kind of keep the meeting moving along. Once the public comment portion of the meeting is over, the board will proceed with the rest of the agenda tonight. You are of course encouraged and welcome to stay for the meeting, but once the public comment section is over, that's the input from the public is done at that point. Again, we are so thankful that you're here tonight, and for those that are in attendance, something that we do with all of our meetings is we open up with a word of prayer. I've got Mr. Tom Palmer, I've asked to come tonight, he's going to be opening us up with a word of prayer, and then we're going to do the pledge of allegiance to our flag. So, Mr. Palmer, you come on up. Oh, Mr. Palmer, thank you sir. Sorry I couldn't introduce myself to you before, but, Mr. Palmer, you come up, that way they can get you on the mic real nice and loud. And those wishing to participate in the prayer and pledge allegiance, please stand at this time.
Let us pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, Lord God, we are truly thankful for you. We are thankful for your sovereignty, we're thankful for your wisdom, we're thankful for your love. In this time that we gather, Lord, we're reminded of the reason that we're entering into a season of Christmas, Lord, that is the birth of your son, and we're truly grateful for him and what he represents in the lives of your people. Heavenly Father, we are truly thankful for the men and the women that are here in this building. Lord, we're thankful for their willingness, we're thankful for their ability to use their gifts that you have given them, each and every one of them, to be able to lead and to grow and mature our town of Etoka, Lord God. Lord, I pray that they would seek your face in everything that they do, Lord, that they would seek your wisdom and your guidance, Lord, that they would petition you with the things that they are trying to solve. Lord God, I ask that you would be with us, you would guide us and direct us, keep us all healthy, Lord, watch over us as we travel or if we stay here in Etoka. Lord, I just pray that your wisdom would just be in dwelling in this building, Lord, and every decision that is made, you will be exalted in all things. Lord, we ask this in the precious name of your son, Jesus, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, today is Tuesday, December tenth. I have the time at seven oh five, and I would ask the town recorder to take roll call, please.
Alderman Aiken?
Here.
Hi, Eric Aiken. Alderman Schaefer?
Here.
Alderman Renfro?
Here.
Alderman Harper?
Here.
Alderman Pace?
Here.
Alderman Deechy?
Here.
We are all present tonight, we do have a forum to conduct business, so I will call the meeting to order, and we will now enter into our public comment section that I was previously talking about. First on our list is Ms. Susan Payne. Ms. Payne, will you come up to the podium, ma'am?
Good evening. Susan Payne, three three six, Julia Ann Drive. I'd like to start by thanking each and every one of you for allowing us the opportunity to ask a question tonight, and I also want to pray that you all have a very blessed thanks, uh, excuse me, blessed Christmas. But I have a, just a question, and I do apologize if it's already been addressed, or a question or a concern, and it's specifically regarding Mead Lake Road, specifically between Etoka Idiville Road to Walker, so once you turn onto Mead Lake in that area. My question is, is there anything being done, or is there anything that can be done to control the amount of speeding that's done specifically in that area? I've also noticed several times now, people will pass even though it's a no passing zone. People are now getting comfortable passing, and as we get more traffic, I've been in claims almost thirty years, and the risk is becoming greater and greater. As they come around that turn, you know, at an increased speed, they're coming into, you know, crossing over the center lane and into oncoming traffic, especially in those blind turns. So I don't know if there's anything that can be done, other than, you know, they have the lane markers that can be put in, I don't know if anybody's ever asked that before, but just curious if anything is being done or that can be done to limit the speed and people passing, again, specifically from Etoka Idiville Road to Walker. That seems to be where it's out of control. So, thank you so much.
Yes ma'am, that's, that's a very good, we've got Chief Rudolph here tonight, I'm sure he's going to make a note of that, and there he is, back in the back, so, thank you ma'am. Mr. Chuck Lane is next on our public comment.
Chuck Lane, one twenty-nine Waters Edge Cove. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Board, appreciate the opportunity to be heard tonight. Like to start with thanking everybody for their service to the community, I recognize you guys work hard to make this place a better place to live. Thankless job probably sometimes, recognize that, but, but you are appreciated, so thank you for all your efforts and your time. Reason why I'm here tonight has come to my attention that you guys have a board seat that you're going to have to fill, I'm not sure exactly what your, what your plan is on how to fill that. I did want to express my opinion on the subject. It seems to me that the most appropriate way to go about filling that board seat would be to give first consideration to those who recently ran in the elections. Obviously there were winners and losers in the election that night, there's somebody out there who fought for that job, there's somebody out there who ran, put their blood, sweat, and tears into an election to try to win that job, and it seems like the most appropriate way to fill that seat. So, again, wanted to express my opinion, give thanks to you guys for your efforts, I'm be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Jeff, Sliker.
Again, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak, and I concur with the, you know, the gentleman that just spoke in regards to, it's a, to be a thankless job that you guys do. In regards to the election, I concur with the fact that there is somebody that ran hard during the election, an individual did unfortunately remove their name from the election, and therefore the other individual that was running for the election, you know, should be the obvious choice for that seat. They worked hard, like he said, about the election and going through the process and doing what was right, and the seat is vacant, it would be proper to put that individual in that seat that ran for that election for that seat at the time, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you sir. Any relation?
Yes, my spouse.
Okay.
You know, I'm the better half, but, it's okay. I'm Delisa Sliker, I live at sixty-two West Cherry Bark Drive, and I concur with everything that Jeff said and the gentleman before him. The seat has been vacant, I believe the person that ran for it also has been filling that seat temporarily for a while now, so I think he knows the job, and I concur with him being the one that's given the job instead of having to do like a reelection or add other people to the ballot. He did work hard, he was out there talking to people, communicating with the community, so I believe that he should be the one that's given that position. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Mr. Tyler Johnson.
Tyler Johnson, two seven zero, Yurukat Trail. I'm here to reiterate what the three people before me said, I really think that the gentleman who was out there visiting with the community ran, ran an honorable campaign. I think he should be elected to serve as the Alderman Board, and I guess, I don't really have anything different to say, but I would like to share these Romans twelve seventeen, repay no one evil for evil, but I give thought to do what is honorable in the sight of all. And one of my favorite verses, Proverbs twenty-nine two, when the righteous are in authority, the people rejoice. And so, I would just implore you guys to do what is honorable and uphold the will of the people. And I think just, I'm grateful every day for the democracy that we live in, and I would like to see democratic process played out, and I think that is to go with the person who was elected second or had the highest number of votes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you sir. All right, the last person we have is somebody named W. Darrow. Thank you, probably, W. Darrow Walker.
Gentlemen, ladies, once again, y'all do have a thankless job, and I've been there, so I understand, I know and understand the role that you have to play and decisions you have to make. I don't have anything to say except I'd like to note the charter or the, what, what it says about how the role of filling this position is, because it's, it's lingering, I think, and could you tell me, Ms. Attorney? Can I, can I do that?
Well, no, usually you have to address the board, I'm sorry.
All right, Board, can I ask, Board, can I ask you if I could note the policy?
I think we should probably, when it comes time to seek the new board, unless...
Out of respect for the mayor, I'll make a motion if we let the mayor ask.
We don't need a motion, if y'all want to do it, go ahead.
Well, I, I'd just like to know the policy, that's all. As far as, y'all gotta make that decision, but I'd like to know that.
What's your address, Mr. Walker?
Ten eighty-five J E Blades Parkway, Etoka, Tennessee.
All right, thank you.
Been living here since nineteen ninety-two.
All right, so, just to go along with, with the mayor requested, and Alderman Jeanini has shown, we did seek counsel from our town attorney, we just had a previous work session, which, we didn't really have that on the agenda, but she kind of gave us the background to it, so go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me for being under the weather. The town charter, it is.
Okay.
It is your own. I'm Robert. So the town charter does speak to, number one, the election process, and that's in section seven of the charter. We had several regular elections and one special election this year. The special election was related to Alderman Feldmayor's term. Alderman Feldmayor was, ran and then was sworn in and certified by the Election Commission, and he served a partial term and then left. And section ten is what the board followed when it was filling his vacancy. And so, section ten outlines the vacancy process, and it's an appointment by the board, and that is the current position that Alderman Deechy holds. And so, we had three regular elections and one special election. And so the three regular elections had numerous potential candidates running for three positions, and the three people with the highest amount of votes are the ones that were the winners of that election pursuant to the charter. Then we had one special election, which is called for under section ten of the charter, and that is the person that was appointed in the seat holds the seat until the next unexpired term. And so, when this special election came up, it, the, the next election is when you put those candidates on the ballot or put that seat on the ballot, we had two candidates running the special election, and one of them happened to be Alderman Deechy, who was also appointed, but it could have been any two candidates. One of the candidates, after the deadline passed, where the Election Commission could remove his name from the ballot, dropped out of the race and did not finish the election. But because his name was still on the ballot, people still voted for him, and he encountered the highest number of votes, and then Alderman Deechy was second. And so, we researched what the effect of the special election, the vacancy, and the dropping out of the race, the effect that it would have on that seat. And so, if, even if it had not been Alderman Deechy, it would have been two other people, what the charter says is that Alderman Deechy would continue to hold that seat until the next soonest election. And so, under the charter and under state law, he will continue until that term concludes, because in order to become an elected official, you have to do all three steps. You have to be, number one, prevail in your race, number two, be certified by the commission, and number three, take the oath that's listed in section eight, in order to become an elected official. So you would not follow section ten of the charter, Alderman, Alderman Deechy will just continue to sit in that seat.
Okay. Mayor Walker?
That answers it, but if, the gentleman that got the most votes, if he would stay in that, then he would have been the filling of, does that right, fill that position?
If he had, if he had stayed in and taken the oath tonight and gotten the certificate, then he would have completed the process to become a sitting elected official.
Okay. Thank you.
So, for this, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, just, just one thing that, that was brought out during the work session, one thing that the attorney is looking into as well is, the motion that was made to appoint Alderman Deechy did, was at the point of expiration in December, so we got to figure out how that works as well.
So Alderman Pace, I did look at that while I was sitting here, and so in order to overcome the charter, we would have to amend the charter, you would have had to amend the charter to change the term, and so he would remain in office through the unexpired term.
So, he's not taking the oath?
Because he's...
Right, because he's appointed. So one board appointed him, could another board declare the seat vacant and appoint someone else?
I don't know the answer to that question, but I'm happy to look at that. Anything else?
Well, I just want, as a matter of fact, just to let the citizens know, Mr. Bogdan did send a notice of resignation to the town, that was sent to the board, stated, you know, that he was not at all considering the position. That was on November twelfth, after the election, and in that, he also stated that he felt the position should go to Chris Deechy, so. So, and I've got other timelines, but I just don't want anybody to think this has anything to do with Mr. Bogdan. He, he stated before, and he stated after, that he was not interested in the position, so this is where, why we find ourselves in this position.
In May.
We're following law, we are, we are nation state and town of laws, and we're following the law here, folks.
Mayor, I, I think it's also important to note that if, if Alderman Deechy hadn't been running, and there were two other people running, and the person that got the highest number of votes dropped out of the race, it still would not go to the second person, he would still remain in that seat because of the way that the charter is set up.
Do you think we still need a motion? I'm assuming since you ran, you want to continue with the seat, but also to be able to make sure that he wants to continue with the seat, so...
I mean, I think you're welcome to ask him if he wants to continue, but like, he can always resign, just like Alderman Feldmayor did, and at that point, the board would follow section ten of the charter.
Okay. All right, that concludes our public comment section at this time, so we will go to, I have a board on the agenda, this is our consent agenda, and I'll just read to you, it says there, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine, generally being acted by one motion, except for any items that are removed from the consent agenda, there will be no separate discussion of these items at this time. We have exhibit A through exhibit G, and I would entertain a motion about the consent agenda. Motion to approve. I have a motion from Alderman Jeanini, do I have a second?
Second.
That was second by Alderman Deechy, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of decepting the consent agenda is approved, is in record, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is entered into record. Item five on our agenda is the old business, the final thing to be considered for the current board, and exhibit H in your packet is final consideration of amending our fiscal year State Street Aid Fund budget, Mr. Town Administrator.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, good evening. So the matter before you on the final consideration for the ordinance, just amends the State Street Aid Budget, as you have in your agenda memo, this is the final consideration, so we are amending the State Street Aid Budget to authorize a total expenditure of six hundred thirty thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars. The amendment's due to an increase in the cost of street paving, we have these funds available, but they were not budgeted at budget time, so be happy to answer any of the questions you might have.
Do you have a motion on the, is this the second consideration? Any objection to reading the ordinance by title on? Hearing none. Mrs. Assistant Recorder.
In ordinance of the town of Etoka, Tennessee, amending section three of ordinance number twenty-four dash oh six dash oh three, related to approved expenditures for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-two, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-five.
It's our motion to approve the ordinance for final consideration. Motion to approve. I have a motion by Alderman Harper, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Renfro. This is an ordinance, do a roll call vote. Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Renfro?
Yes.
Alderman Jeanini?
Yes.
Alderman Harper?
Yes.
Alderman Pace?
Yes.
Alderman Deechy?
Yes.
It's unanimous, ordinance is passed on final consideration. Exhibit I in your packet is a resolution, annexation on the Wurtem Road, we did have a public comment period last month about this annexation, and Mr. Town Administrator, do we have anything else to add?
Not a lot, Mr. Mayor, basically this is, this is a resolution to annex the property into the town limits. As you mentioned, there was a public hearing held on November the twelfth, we've got a favorable recommendation from the Planning Commission, the board approved the resolution on a first consideration, and that's before you now for a second and final consideration.
All right, this is a resolution on ordinance, but I would entertain a motion, exhibit aye. Motion to approve. Thank you, Alderman Jeanini, do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Alderman Jeanini, I have a second by Alderman Pace. Any discussion on this resolution?
Do you have one question, ma'am?
Yes.
Has anything changed in the past month, as far as us being responsible, or taken any more financial burden by doing this?
Not, where is Amanda at?
Right there.
Not that I'm aware of, nothing's changed.
No, the services are already there.
Services are already there.
Yes, sir.
We're not assuming any other financial burden, so this is really a, we're gaining off of it.
Yes, sir, property tax.
Just to go along with Alderman Jeanini's question, we did have in that last month, there was a statement and an investigation done by the police and the fire department as far as the, you know, necessary, taking additional area, and they stated that there was no problem with annexing that amount. We're already responsible for maintaining the road.
Yes, there's an included plan of... Yes, there's an included planning service that I think maybe we're referring to include, uh, include planning service that, that the boards have to review and, and consider as well as the planning portion.
Entertain a motion on resolution? Do we have that already? Alderman Gianini and Alderman Pace, right? All right. All in favor of exhibit I, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, I'm sorry.
I abstain also.
What? Miss Amber, Miss Amber, do we need to go all on this particular resolution because it's an annexation?
I think so.
Yeah. Okay. So we'll do a roll call.
And a reason for the abstention.
Yes. And the reason for the extensions.
Okay. So starting on this end, Alderman Deechy. Alderman Pace?
Yes.
Alderman Harper?
I'm going to abstain on a potential conflict of interest on, I'm a contractor and develop that with a license.
Alderman Gianini?
Yes.
Alderman Renfro?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Abstain due to a former interest in one property.
So we have, by my count, four people approved to abstain, and it does pass. All right. Next item on the agenda is item number six, which this board will adjourn. And I know there's at least 10 different ways to pronounce it. I pronounce it sine da, so, which means without basically further business. So, you need a motion for that, ladies?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, sine da.
Sine da.
By Alderman Harper, do you have a second?
Second.
Alderman Schaefer. And this board stands adjourned. Give us, uh, five minutes, and then we've got Judge, your honor. And, uh, we'll be doing, uh, swearing in for our new Alderman Allee. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Oh Chief.
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes, okay, where is she? Okay, do we, Kurt, can Becky see us?
Uh, can y'all move more towards the center? Sorry.
Absolutely, no, we want Becky to see.
Yeah.
My wife is ill, I apologize, but she's watching this.
Okay.
Good?
Yeah.
Okay. Hold this. What you got right here? I, Chief Jesse Poole.
I, Chief Jesse.
Exhale and swear.
Exhale and swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the State of Tennessee.
And the State of Tennessee.
And will obey the laws.
And will obey the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the State of Tennessee.
And the State of Tennessee.
And that I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the Charter.
Of the Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the Town of Otoka.
Of the Town of Otoka.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Alderman.
Of Alderman.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, same protocol applies. We do have a public comment sheet for this new board that's been seated. If you wish to address the new board, please make sure that you sign that public comment sheet. When we get to the public comment period, we'll give you two minutes to address any with any concerns or things you may have. Today is December 10th. I have the time at 7:39 PM. And Mr. Assistant, record which take role, please.
Mayor Eakin.
Here.
Alderman Litesy.
Here.
Alderman Deechy.
Here.
Alderman Harper.
Here.
Alderman Giannini.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Poole.
Here.
All right, everybody is present. We do have a forum to conduct business tonight. Uh, we now come to the public comment period for our new board. Ms. Pam Givens.
Pam Givens, five.
Hold my hand for Ms. Pam.
Five eight eight Williamsburg Drive. I'm not sure exactly how to say this, but now that there's a new board in place, I would like to recommend we change the Charter or ordinance when we do voting and somebody is voted out, that they don't automatically stay because of the way the Charter is written. I just think there's a better way that we, the people, should be electing our leaders. And if the Charter reads that way now, and it's no disrespect to the person here, but just across the board for future elections. There was a reason that somebody else won, there was a reason that this person got voted out, that the people should be able to speak who their leaders are and vote them in or vote them out. And if the Charter is written like, "Too bad Town of Otoka, this is what we're gonna do," I don't think that's right. So if it's written that way, I would like the new board to rewrite it.
Okay.
That's just my personal opinion, but clearly there's a reason the town voted the way they voted.
Because it's the law.
Huh?
Because it's the law.
Well...
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Ms. Pam is the only person for the public comment period. We'll now go into, uh, new business. Appointments from the mayor. One of the few things that the mayor gets to do is appoint certain positions with Planning Commission, things like that. And one of them is the vice mayor. If I'm not around to conduct a meeting, um, I get to appoint a vice mayor. And I will be appointing Alderman Harper as vice mayor for this term next two years.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, uh, thank you, Mr. And I would also like to say, thank Mr. Giannini. Uh, he was our short time for vice mayor. I don't think he actually ever had to do anything.
No, then I wanna thank you for that.
Okay, so that's just a matter of information for the board. But we do come to now the second point, the appointment by the Board of Mayor and Alderman for the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission, there are two positions that are appointed to the Planning Commission. One of them is, the board can appoint, doesn't have to be a board member, it usually is, but the board can appoint somebody to represent the board. The mayor can then also take the position on the Planning Commission or appoint somebody to fill in in his place. Uh, I have been going, I have been filling the mayor's position. I can, I will continue to do that on the Planning Commission, but the board needs to appoint somebody to fill their spot on the town's Planning Commission. So we would open up nominations for that.
I would like to nominate John Harper. He's been sitting on it, uh, for a while now. He's been in turn with the law.
I'll accept.
All right. Need a vote, need a what do we need?
Well, the board would need to make the appointment.
So we just need a motion and everything? Okay, so we have a motion by Alderman Giannini. I think we have a second by Alderman Schaefer.
Yep.
Okay. All in favor of appointing Alderman Harper to fill the board's position on the Planning Commission? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Alderman Harper will continue to fill that on the Planning Commission. Next is our ordinances and resolutions. We have Exhibit J in your packet, and this is authorizing the check signers for the town.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, sir. Have a motion to approve, uh, yeah, okay, by Alderman Giannini. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Schaefer. All in favor? It's got the, uh, elected officials there in front of you, just so anybody wants to look on your monitors. All in favor of approving the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A pass. Next resolution, Exhibit K in your packet, is approving our wastewater treatment agreement. Mr. Kurt's already got it up there. Mr. Town Administrator.
Boy, where did we get? Yes, this has been a very, uh, long process, uh, as we work for our partners to renegotiate a 1989 agreement. Yes, 1989, quite some time ago. But ultimately, we are here, uh, to consider the wastewater treatment agreement. Under the previous agreement with the city of Monford, we have a, or even under the current agreement, we have a shared wastewater treatment facility. So three municipalities use that wastewater treatment facility, the Town of Brighton, City of Monford, and the Town of Otoka. Uh, under the old agreement, the Town of Otoka had a little over 11% of reserve treatment capacity in this agreement before you for consideration. Uh, it has been years of negotiation, literally, and Otoka has secured 46% of the treatment capacity, which is the largest amount of the three municipalities, along with some specific provisions uh, to safeguard our customers' interests, which are ultimately our residents who are connected to the wastewater sewer. Additionally, there are additional provisions in there that, well, we can review, uh, the treatment agreement at specified times over the course of the next few years due to the uncertainty of, uh, what blow the city will bring to our communities respectively of the three. Uh, so there are some provisions in there, and really it was a, it was a good agreement. I think that we have a good agreement. We've reached, uh, good consensus among the other, uh, communities. It's been reviewed by the legal, our, our town attorney, and I think the board's had this for probably two full weeks, maybe three. I think we got it before Thanksgiving, so, um, I haven't received only just a couple of questions from one of the board members, but if there's any questions, we'll be happy to try to answer those. Uh, of course, we have our town attorney here that can also assist if needed. But really be asking for the authorization from the board to authorize the mayor, uh, to execute the agreement.
All right.
I make a motion to authorize the mayor's son.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion by Alderman Giannini. We have a second by Alderman Poole. Thank you, sir. Uh, any other comments, discussion?
A lot of work went into this, the staff, the attorneys, the mayor. So I appreciate it. This is heads well above what we had before.
It really is. Between the 89 agreement and this agreement is night and day. It's almost like an abacus versus a supercomputer. It is just massively improved. Uh, I think it'd be a good thing moving forward for all municipalities, so. We do have a motion, we do have a second. All in favor of resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Exhibit L, we have a agreement for legal services. Mr. Town Administrator.
Yes, sir, the form, the document before you is the Agreement for Legal Services for our town attorney here, Sheldon, uh, Hannover Walsh. I can never remember the second part for some reason. Um, there is a slight increase in, in fee, but generally this is something that we do at the end of the year to, uh, improve the services of our town attorney, who has been doing, I believe, a fine job.
Have a motion for the resolution.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Alderman Harper. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Alderman Schaefer. Any questions, comments, discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agreement for legal services is approved. Exhibit M in your packet is an agreement regarding Shepherd's Bridge. Mr. Town Administrator.
Um, I can, I can touch on this, and what we've got in front of you is a, an agreement between the town and Monford Development and Walker Meadows LLC. Uh, what it does is assess force the conditions of installation of a required sewer lift station, uh, after the recording of the final plat. And has, uh, the agreement has been through legal review, I believe, uh, if necessary. I think, I thought I saw Mr. Developer here, but maybe he might have left.
He's in.
Yeah, he's in the back. Okay. Uh, so all parties are here, if there's any specific questions, if, if not, we can move forward with your agreement.
Basically, and Wayne, if I get this wrong, strike me out. Um, we've got a delay on the pump that's necessary for, uh, that subdivision, but this allows the developer, the town, to continue to move forward, and when the pump comes in, they'll come back for a final. Uh, but this allows things to keep moving. Pretty much it?
That's correct.
Okay.
Including the bond issue there.
Yes.
Make a motion, Exhibit N be approved?
I have a motion by Alderman Poole, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Litesy. Any other comments, discussion? Very none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Mr. Wayne? There we go.
And Mr. Mayor, we have a clean copy, so that the board has approved that, uh, I don't know if Mr. Bowler can hang around till after the meeting, but we can, about that.
All right. Thank you, sir. Exhibit N in your packet is an resolution to approve an agreement regarding Lockmead Phase Three, getting some necessary repairs done and getting that taken care of. So, Mr. Administrator?
Yes, sir, as I'm sure that some members of the community are aware, and I'm sure most, if not all, members of the board are aware, uh, there were some issues with the, the road infrastructure inside of Lockmead Phase Three. Uh, what this resolution does, it says an agreement in lieu of any litigation, and would resolve any disputes, claims, disappearments, et cetera. Uh, developer is ready to move forward to make those repairs, uh, conditional approval of the resolution. Uh, the town will also be partnering with the developer to put the final wear course on the rest of that, uh, Phase Three and that subdivision. Those costs are included in the, in the resolution for the board's consideration.
Sheriff and Attorney motion about Exhibit N.
Motion to accept.
Have a motion from Alderman Deechy, do I have a second? Second by Alderman Schaefer. Any questions, any further discussion about this resolution?
Is the developer here?
I do not see.
I do not, sir.
I know that Director Farbo has been in frequent contact with him, it was just a matter of securing the resolution.
You have some questions, Alderman?
I did, most of the time when I do these, there are security bonds, isn't it?
This isn't a dedication of the, well, you wanna talk on that?
Amanda, you wanna come up? Amanda Farbo is our town staff code enforcement.
So normally, when you would record a final plat, a bond would be put in place, and that is before you start building houses. So that, that would be when that bond is in place. Here, um, the, the final layer, there's multiple layers to the asphalt. There are concerns that need to be checked off, which is attached to your, um, packet as Exhibit A. Those things will be addressed prior to that final layer being put on, and the developer has 100% agreed to this before we send it back for review with legal. There's a one-year warranty that, that will be on that final layer of asphalt. They'll be applying it. We will just be paying half, we, we agreed to 50% of that because Lockmead had a master plan years ago. Um, so there's, there was so many intertwining as far as that set date, that we would no longer, um, put that final layer on. This one kind of fell where technically, we, we would not be responsible, but to look at the legal steps in walking through that, this was a neutral thing. Plus, our citizens in Lockmead Three have some issues that need to be addressed in a very quick, timely manner. And, um, the developer has agreed that they will be boots on the ground as soon as this is signed by the mayor.
Most of the time I knew in the past was, oh, if somebody didn't do something contract, you could follow that. But I, I understand this is a little different.
See, there is an actual bond on the existing, uh, the development, because that's what'll be released on the actual, the rest of the infrastructure. But this is separate to get that final layer and us to dismiss it and accept the infrastructure in once it's complete.
That's pretty sad looking.
Very much.
And all these photos are the punch list items that they've been, they're aware of.
Yes, sir, that they have agreed, yes, that they know that they're responsible for, and, um, and I'm expecting to make sure that those things are taken care of before we move forward.
And Alderman Giannini, those pictures are incorporated as part of the contract.
Any further questions?
Is this the last one of these?
Yes. Yes.
Put that on record. This is the last one.
Yes, because, yes, yes.
I believe we have. We have a motion, we have a second?
I have, I have one quick question, just for my own clarification. I think I know the answer, but just wanna get it confirmed. So, the acceptance of the subdivision, this phase of the subdivision won't come back before the board, because it's in the resolution that, once the repairs are completed to satisfaction, we'll accept the, the road structure.
Okay. Everybody's aware of that?
Thank you.
All right. All in favor of Exhibit N, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution is approved.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
May I ask, uh, Mark, when it is completed, would someone report back in here?
Certainly. I'm sure that our, our citizens in that phase will be more than happy to report back to all of you and say a huge thank you for getting it resolved, but certainly will be happy to report back.
Thank you, sir. Why don't we just ask Director Farbo with that, come back with the status when we're done? Thank you, ma'am. Uh, we have Exhibit O in your packet, another resolution. This is approved for a fire apparatus grant. I don't know whether it's Mr. Administrator or Chief.
I, I think Chief Scott, where is he at?
He's right there.
Okay. Sorry.
Chief, why don't you come up to the podium, sir?
Since we've got three items on there for Fire Department to trust.
Oh, okay, so this...
I'll go ahead and build a campfire. Yeah, I'll build a campfire and a tent. He's just playing on, on sitting here. Uh, the AFG, uh, grant schedule has actually been pushed forward, and that's why we're coming to you in December. Usually, it's in the springtime when we're coming to you on the grants for the assistance, the firefighter grants through FEMA. Uh, but because, like I said, they, they upped it forward, it, uh, it pretty much put it on a December 20th deadline, so that's why I'm here tonight. Uh, the first one that we're looking at is for an apparatus grant, which is one that we put in for every year. One of the things that we did different this year, though, was first looked at the cost that was typically being won by other departments across the country with the grants. So, what we're looking at is a pumper that is about $575,000. We do have a cost share, uh, of approximately 30, actually 27,380, um, which would give a total of 547 that FEMA would be paying, $547,000. Uh, one of the stipulations, or one of the things that we changed in this was, uh, utilizing it also for mutual aid calls. So, kind of like a counter response, but what you have to look at is, in our county response area, when we look at our first in, where we count Cherokee, Cheyenne, Portersville, Wertham, those areas, that's part of our county response area outside of our, as, along with our mutual aid, uh, areas that we respond to. This pumper would have to go to at least half of those. Well, we average about 15 calls a month in those areas that I just mentioned. So by, in its service through Station Two, where this pumper would be located at if we win it. Um, so we would be able to, uh, show the need in the area for the acceptance of this pumper if we should happen to get it, based on, on those numbers alone. So we're asking that the board consider allowing us to apply for this grant since it is a cost share. And, uh, any questions?
Yeah, $27,000 for $500,000 apparatus.
Yeah.
I make a motion to either, let you apply for that.
I have a motion by Alderman Giannini. I have a second by Alderman Poole. Any other questions? All right, Chief. Uh, all in favor of Resolution O, as in Oscar? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution is approved. Thank you. Next resolution, you can stay up here, right?
Yep.
Exhibit P in your packets, as in pop. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, the second grant is gonna be for the AFG mini-grant, which is one that we've been very successful on in the, over the past few years. It's also got a cost share to it. Last year, if you remember, uh, for those that were on the board, it was for a new cardiac monitor and CPR device, which we were able to obtain, and we're still working through the management of that grant right now. Uh, this year, we wanted to look at, start replacing some of our, uh, equipment that we have, 'cause we're going on 10 years now in 2015, or 2025 will be 10 years old as a fire department. So some of that equipment does need to start getting changed out. Uh, when we started looking at the cost benefit analysis on this, one of the things that we really need more than replacing hose, 'cause we can stretch that out a little bit, is actually turnouts. Um, I'm in dire need of approximately 10 sets of turnouts, along with wildland gear. Uh, when you look at a turnout set, an ensemble, you're looking at close to almost $6,000 between a helmet, jacket, pants, boots. So we thought that it would be best that we went ahead and, since we've been successful in the past with this mini-grant, if we can go ahead and look at getting those 10 sets of turnouts and 10 sets of wildland gear, which would save approximately $50,000 out of my budget next year, if, if we're continuing to be successful. I, I told you guys when I was appointed that I'm gonna be looking for alternative sources of, of, uh, being able to get these things, and here, here I am. So I'm asking, because we do have a cost share, uh, approximately $2,300 would be the fire department's share if we should happen to get this. Uh, once again, $50,000 worth of equipment for 20, $2,300.
Are you saying wildland gear?
Yes. So the difference, when, when you see us in structural firefighting gear, where it's the heavier coats, heavier pants, um, because there's three barrier, there's three layers to a turnout set. You have your outer shell, which protects you from anything that's falling, but then you have a moisture barrier, and then you have a thermal barrier, which is protecting you from the heat. On wildland gear, it's essentially just an outer shell, uh, and it's quite cheaper, uh, but it's not set for structural firefighting. But for when we're out there doing our grass fires and the guys can actually wear this, where it's a lot lighter, but it's still protecting them from grass fires and, and such that they're not overexerting themselves wearing the heavier gear.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
I have a motion to accept by Alderman Deechy, do I have a second?
Second.
Is that by, we're gonna, Brendan defer to our new, uh, second by Alderman Litesy. All right. Uh, all in favor of the resolution approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
And Exhibit Q?
Told you, I, I was gonna go ahead and start a campfire here.
Oh, yes, sir. Go ahead.
So the last one that we're looking, that we're wanting to apply for is one that we've, once again, applied for previous nine years, and it's the safer grant. It's the staffing for adequate, uh, uh, basically, it's for personnel. And you've all heard me say, I, I need nine people. And so with this, what the grant covers now compared to years in past, years past, it was a stepping, uh, step block where they would cover the 100% the first year of payroll and benefits. Second year, it would drop down to 50%, third year, 75%, and then fourth year, we had to figure out how to pay. Uh, FEMA, FEMA has changed it up now, where for the first three years, the three years of the grant, they actually cover 100% of the payroll and benefits of the firefighters that are, uh, being requested. With this grant, we're gonna be requesting three personnel. Uh, I don't have hard figures with the, uh, grant at this time, because it's not due for, uh, the application process is not open just yet, but we're anticipating it to open beginning of January. So we thought, while we have the other two coming in front of you, let's go ahead and, and address it now. But there is no cost share on that one, like I said, for the first three years. Uh, the federal government will be picking up full payroll and benefits for those personnel that we do hire off of that grant.
Any questions?
Yes.
I guess we need a motion first. Motion to accept. Alderman Deechy, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Schaefer, we have a second question, yes, sir?
Yes, sir. I know pretty familiar with the grants. Um, what is the underlying rule, the caveat with that? Is it gonna be required that after the three years, you gotta maintain them for X amount of time?
No, the, because things change, the, a lot of departments that have, that have won the safer have... have turned around and laid people off after that three year. We're hoping that we wouldn't have to, but it gives us enough time to figure out how we're going to go ahead and pay to keep them there, because it's a need that we have for the department.
Okay, but since you don't have the particulars on the grant quite yet, so are you for sure about that part of it?
Yes.
Okay.
D. Chi.
So, I would just say that because of the fact that nothing's guaranteed after three years, you said?
Correct.
And we haven't started working on the budget yet, but at least we start talking about it and get it down, right? Then we start thinking about trying to put a little bit away towards that, so we can afford these three firefighters. I would hate to see us become dependent on these three firefighters in three years, because of budgetary concerns, not be able to afford them. I think it would be smarter for us to start thinking about that, and we'll put the firefighter's budget together and put a little bit away. You mark it as whatever you want to call it, but, you know, save that for any day for three years from now, so we can continue to pay for those three firefighters that we've invested in, and the country is paid for to train.
Yep, that's what we've done in the past. So, when would you, you might have said this, Chief, when would you know?
We're, we're
The reward of it?
Not until probably a year from now.
Four years.
Yeah.
My question is, you can receive up to three. Is there any, in your opinion, any advantage for not asking for the whole three? If you went in and asked for one or two, that possibly increase our odds?
Not really. It, they, when, when, one of the things that hurts us in the grant process is our median income. We have a median income of $80,000 in the town of Otoka. They consider us rich. We've looked at other grants over the past two weeks for a public safety building to replace a fire station. We can add a community center to it?
Chief is welcome, excuse me.
Okay, we could add a community center to it, but we're still too rich, because we're ninety, we're twenty percent over Tennessee state average. And so, when you look at these, these grants, trying to do a grant for one with all the work that we put into writing the grant, you're, you're better shooting for six or nine, but threes are more realistic, that we make, we will have a better opportunity getting. And the reason why I look at three is because I have three shifts, I can add one person per shift and kind of even it out that way, because essentially I'd like to have nine, and that would give me five people at one station, four at another. And we can start looking at other opportunities that I have in my, my long-range goal. So, but that's why it's easier getting, going for three, to keep it evened out on each shift for safety issues.
All right, can you tell me who again who made the motion in a second?
Alderman D. Chi made the motion, Alderman Schaefer seconded.
All right. Hearing no other questions, all in favor of approving the SAFER grants, Admiral, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed?
Thank you, I'm going to take my toys and go home now. Put the campfire around first.
All right, that brings us into the night's miscellaneous items from the mayor, the Board of Aldermen, and the town administrator. I've got quite the list here, I'll try to make it quick. One thing that I would like, probably should have done before they left, I think we've, we've gone. We are going to recognize Alderman Row and Alderman Pace for their service, for their public service at our January meeting. And, oh, Cody, okay, so, we do, we do appreciate their public, public service, folks, it's like you've heard, it's, thank this job.
Mayor, let's also invite Phil Mayor, see if he can come also.
Okay, we, we're doing something special for him too, but yeah, we can make sure, if we can get Danny, I'm sure he can break out of his busy schedule. So, that will be at our January meeting. To go along with that, I have a conflict for the normally scheduled January and February meetings, and I would request and ask y'all, so January, normally we'd be meeting on the fourteenth, if we could move that to the twenty-first. Staff is always easier if we can push it further, gives them, if we back it up, it crunches their time on getting reports ready and stuff, so. If y'all are good with moving the January meeting to the twenty-first. Okay, I've got two, I got this hand, all right? So, we'll make that, sure that happens, and we'll get all the notices and the public notices and everything letter by note, it's going to be moved to the twenty-first. The February meeting would normally be on the eleventh, and I do have a conflict, I'll be out of town, could we move that to the eighteenth? Now, here's your chance.
No, it's good, I'm good for the answer.
Okay, I'm also hearing consensus there, so we will make sure that the February meeting, all the notices get changed, and that will be on the eighteen. Next thing we have, last month, I mentioned, I'm going to continue to mention it, you want to save the town $20,000, very easy how you do it, and that is by telling the staff, the town employees, that you would like to get your bill for water, sewer, trash electronically, instead of them having to print stuff, go to the post office, get postage, postage, and relying on the lovely efficiency of the Otoka Post Office. It, it will save $20,000 by that simple step. Ms. Karen is here, and I want to recognize, because I don't get on social media a lot, Ms. Karen very much appreciated, posted from the last notification, and she got the normal social media treatment for doing something really good. And Ms. Karen, I want to say thank you for doing that. And she got all sorts of beat up about that. And one of the questions that I wanted to address, this is not mandatory, this is a voluntary program. We would like to have your email address, just in case we don't get your payment, gives us another means of getting into contact with you, but signing up for this is totally, totally voluntary. It is not a mandatory thing, the town is not making you do anything. If you want to still get that postage in the mail, get that mailman delivered to you, you go right ahead. But we're going to continue to push for it, because it is such a simple thing that can save the town some money. And Ms. Karen, feel free to post it again. Thank you, ma'am, for doing that.
We get it, can we get a notice on, sorry, I'm having a hard time talking tonight. How many people signed up from last month to this month? So, since we made the announcement, how many people signed up?
Give them a ballpark of nothing else.
So, in October, we mailed out over 3,100 paper bills, sorry. We mailed out over 3,100 paper bills. In November, when we bailed out, we were at 2,300. Yeah, like between 2,000, 20, 300 paper bills.
And I'll just reiterate too, I said this last month, nothing is changing with your payment. If you want to give the town an automated way of getting your payment taken care of, but all we're saying is how you get notified of your bill. If you still want to come in and make your payment, that is totally fine, nothing changes with that process. It's just how you are getting your bill. I have been doing this since probably the day we started, and I've never had an issue. That email works great, it really does, okay. We have got, a little later this year, but we've got some great things in Otoka this Friday and Saturday. Friday night, the thirteenth of December, starting at 6:00 PM, we will have Santa's Ride. Santa is gearing up, and all of our town employees have been working hard to make sure that we're going to have a great Santa's Ride on Friday, starting at six o'clock, and then on Saturday night, starting at five o'clock. You can get on the town's Facebook page, and is that where the tracker's going to be, Ms. Orton?
Yes, I have it posted on the website and on Facebook, and I'll continue to post it up prior right to it. Normally I'll also post like, hey, we're headed out, just in case, typically we don't run late or anything of that nature, but I'll kind of try to post some little updates throughout the evening too.
So, that is Friday, the thirteenth, there's going to be certain areas of Otoka, Saturday, the fourteenth. And if you want to know which night Santa's going to be in your area, just consult the website, the Facebook page, et cetera, et cetera. I've already been trying to help out on next door, somebody had a question, and we questioned it, gave them the answer. Right after the Santa returns on Saturday night, we're going to do our Christmas tree lighting right here, in this location. That will be starting officially at 7:30, so 7:30 Saturday night, it's a great time for bringing your family, bringing your little ones. We've got cookies, we've got, I think, hot chocolate, looking for a yes or
The drinks with hot chocolate.
Okay. And there's going to be, right in this room here, you can get pictures made with Santa, Mrs. Claus, I believe that Grinch is going to make an appearance.
I can't be the mayor, I'm sorry.
So, so Friday and Saturday night, a lot of great stuff going on in the town, and somebody asked me, why is it kind of later this year? We always try to be respectful, we don't want to conflict with Monfer, they try to not conflict with our stuff, and just kind of the way the schedules work out, it's a little later this year than it normally is, but it's still going to be a great time, and we'd love to have you come out for that.
Mayor, the weather forecast for Saturday is terrible, does that impact anything?
So, it keeps changing, we'll keep watching it, so Santa's Ride has always happened, no matter what, unless it was like a thunderstorm situation. So, we'll roll through it, because either people can sit in their cars at the end of the road, or look out their window if they need to. As for the tree lighting, I'll kind of watch it a little closer, within reason, as long as it's not a complete downpour, we can still pop the lights on, and then we still have some activities that are indoors, so I think we can make it work regardless.
Oh, yeah, one thing I want to add about that too, so last year, we had a little bit, it was our first time we ever been in this location. We've tweaked it, and as far as the Santa pictures and the cookies, it's all going to run a lot smoother this year, I guarantee it. So, if you're thinking, oh, wow, I stood in a long line last year, hopefully the same will be the case, because we made some changes, we think it's going to go a lot better for everybody. That's all I have. Board?
I just want to say Merry Christmas to everybody, and I hope you all have a wonderful Thanksgiving, and I hope you have a great New Year. Cody and Christie have been an honor to serve with you.
Yes.
Cody, you're good at this, I hope you'll run again in two years.
Thanks, sir.
I'd like to reiterate, thank you, Cody and Christie, learned a lot about y'all one day, so I thank y'all. Just want to thank citizens, and my wife and my daughter and my family.
Mayor, I have a couple items. So, for the folks where we opt into the electronic payment, how about, has there been a thought of if we opt into the electronic payments, since we're not paying postage? We try and give the, the citizens back 25 cents or 50 cents on their bill or not?
Well, when I talk about payment, it's notifications, it's the bills.
I understand, but if
And that was one of the questions that Ms. Karen got beat up, I think, was, well, what are they going to do with saving that $20,000? The board can decide what y'all want to do, I will say that this is $20,000 that will be a lot more helpful in our water and our sewer infrastructure. It might save, you know, having to raise revenue, raise income.
I understand.
So, but y'all can do what y'all want to.
Maybe, you know, talk about the things we
But again, it's not billing, we're not changing, you can pay as effectively as you like to pay.
Yeah. Maybe it doesn't run time or something like that, it's a thank you to the, or the citizens, sorry. For the Santa's Ride, any chance we could livestream that?
Well, it's going to be a tracker, it is.
Well, no, I, I know that, but I mean, so we have, we have the GoPro here, we can stream it here, we can stream it out on the fire truck as well, just as easily, it's not rocket science.
So, that would be a Kurt question, but he isn't volunteer, so it really would be up to him if it's something he'd be interested in doing, because I'll be honest, no idea how to do that, but somebody would have to help me.
So, live stream
Somebody has a good idea how to do it.
Livestream on the fire truck, we will run into cell phone coverage issues. We've got some areas of town that have excellent cell phone coverage, some areas that do not.
That's right, because y'all tried that before.
We have, yeah, we have tried, we have tried to stream it two years ago, and when we got into the Williamsburg Blazes Estates, that area, especially around Station Two, the cell phone coverage is pretty much non-existent there. So, if we, if we had better cell coverage, I'd say, let's do it, let's give it a shot, but we've tried it.
Kurt, what if we use Starlink? Do we have Starlink?
We, we do have a Starlink.
So, let's, let's say that it's possibly going to happen, but at least like if not this year, maybe
Worst case, we'll definitely look into it for next year, it's kind of short notice.
Yeah.
We can definitely look into that.
Yeah, that might be something we try, we might do a beta test this year, but
Fair enough. We could put the Easter money. And then lastly, I want to thank voters who came and spoke on my behalf today, and to voters who do vote for me, and I wish my party the best.
Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, just a couple of things, first, congratulations to those who ran for election, Alderman Poole, Alderman G. and Annie, Alderman Lightsey, congratulations. Also like to appreciate the conversations that we've had over the last couple of weeks with Alderman Schaefer and Alderman Harbor. Y'all ran a very difficult race, and I know how challenging that can be in all aspects, so, you know, y'all put in the work, and, and here we are, and congratulations to you all. End Task Management Consultant, so, save the date, January ninth, I believe, I sent out an email for this. So, our management consultant will be here on January the eighth, just need to set a time with the board. They're going to talk about, he's going to talk about roles and responsibilities, organization, goals, and really try to craft something in, in a way that is beneficial for the board with the board's input. And we have the Elected Officials Training Academy, January 21st through the 23rd, it's three evenings, from 4:30 PM to 7:00 PM. There is a requirement by the Comptroller's Office to require each elected official to have at least 12 hours of utility training in their first year in office. And then they are also required, after the initial 12 hours of training, they're required to get in another 12 hours of training over the next three years. So, over your four-year term, you're supposed to receive 24 hours of training. The Elected Officials Academy, scheduled for those dates, provides seven and a half hours of your required utility training, so you can know, you can get more than half of your required training, and I believe all of our board members need that training. Either you've had it in the past, and there's been some lapse and some expiration of those requirements, but our newly elected and newly seated folks will definitely need to get that training, and it'll give you a good head start. The, that particular training's going to cover foundational aspects of municipal governance, it's also going to cover the charter codes, ethics, open meetings, public records, effective meetings, and financial management for the municipality and the utility.
Mark, may I interrupt?
Yes.
The mayor had just changed the January meeting to January 21st.
Well, this, this would
This would affect that meeting?
Yes, it will. Yes, it will. I will see if there's some option, if that's going to be recorded, you may be able to participate at another point in time. But it'll be over by seven, the virtual, let me, let me find out about that, I'll get back to you all on that particular item. Thank you for catching that mistake.
Question mark on the January eighth or ninth, would that count also?
That would not, but that will go a long way, I think, in, in getting everybody off to the right foot, all of our, all of our new board members off on the right foot, and a good refresher for those that have been on the board for a while. Legislation changes constantly, at least once a year, new stuff comes along, old stuff goes away. So, I'd really, I would strongly encourage all of you to participate in that on the ninth, and, and Mr. Lou Ellen is willing to put in as much effort as the board gives feedback for. This could be one of a couple of meetings, or it could be the one and only meeting. So, I think that based on your input and feedback to him, how much more, how much more we move forward with that?
Do you just need a time for that?
I'd say probably be a two hours, hour and a half, two hours. Yes, a time would be great for the ninth.
I'm pretty much good, anytime. Five o'clock? Five to seven?
Five to seven?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that works. There is a
Five o'clock would be tight, but I'll go like this.
Well, I mean, Chief, 5:30?
That would.
Okay.
That's a mayor.
Yep.
Okay, 5:30 to 7:30, we'll kind of, we'll just, we'll just start at 5:30 and run till time runs out there. Director Farber and I attended a Biscuits in Business at McMahon Physical Therapy this morning. That was really good to reach out and, and talk to a relatively new business in the community, along with the South Tipton Chamber. And then, Tipton Prevents is having a Christmas luncheon here at Town Hall on December the nineteenth. Is that right? Nine a.m.?
Nine a.m.
It's going to be nine a.m.
Nine a.m.
Nine a.m., so Christmas get-together there. I believe Director Isbell is part of that community, used to be Drug Free Tipton. They've, they've rebranded themselves, Tipton Present, Prevents. That notification went out in the chamber, so y'all are welcome to attend, it'll be here at Town Hall, nine a.m. on the nineteenth. The other, last thing that I have for you tonight is, like to get a work session date for the, the brand logo, so we can nail down some of those final details. Wanted to wait till the new board is seated, see what the, the situation was as far as the time and the date, and we can nail down the, the final points of the brand. That'll be color, when it's going to use all those things that the board's determined what's on the wall behind. The board is, is what our logo and brand will be, but there's some other specifics that we need the board's input on, so that we can then move forward with the, the marketing component. So, open to suggestions of where we would like that to be. If we can get it done before Christmas holiday, great. If not, that's okay too. I know it's a busy, busy time of year.
Busy time. Y'all want, y'all want the administrator to put out like three possible dates? Y'all want to nail it down right now, whatever we need to do?
I'd assume that the week of the twenty-third is pretty well out for everybody.
Yes.
So, it kind of leaves us next week.
That's, that's next week.
Yeah, that kind of leaves us next week.
So, that's Tuesday, the seventeenth? Oh, yeah, what time? I'm actually good, Danny.
I'm just kidding, I'm looking at February.
What?
Everybody.
Tuesday, the seventeenth, five-thirty, chief? I got a quick call in, chief.
Tomorrow, but, yeah.
Five-thirty? Okay, five-thirty on the seventeenth.
Looks like five-thirty on the seventeenth. We'll get that notification out, and we will put some information out to you all to look at in advance, and.
Just so I can tell you, for either of these meetings, food, no food?
That's up to the board, because I know that was one of the budget items that was trimmed out, so.
How long you expect the next one?
The, the brand session?
Yes.
Maybe an hour. I think it's, it's on the high side.
We've never had one.
It's, it's kind of like picking the carpet in the sanctuary of church, right?
No, we do have, but we do have kind of a checklist of things that have to be answered.
We do.
It should, it should go over there.
Okay.
All right. Anything else?
That's all I had at this point.
Entertaining motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
I have a motion. Second, Alderman Schaefer. All in favor, say aye.